Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this common council meeting for Wednesday, May the 4th. We will call to order and begin by having our clerk call the roll.
Mayor Rosenbarger?
Here.
Volin, Sims?
Here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Pete Malt Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you all. To summarize tonight's agenda, we will have no minutes to approve this evening. We move then to reports for council members, the mayor and city offices, and we do have a report from the Commission on the Status of Women to hear this evening. Council committees will have an opportunity, followed by the first opportunity for public comment, not on tonight's agenda, followed by appointments to boards and commissions. Then we will move to legislation for first reading this time due to some issues coming up, Ordinance 22-07, to amend the City of Bloomington zoning maps by amending the district ordinance and preliminary plan for planned unit development regarding 1550 North Arlington Park Drive, trinitas petitioner. Followed by Ordinance 22-08, to amend Title 20, Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Technical Corrections Set Forth in BMC 20. Followed by Ordinance 22-09, to amend Title 20, Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Technical Corrections Set Forth in BMC 20.03. Ordinance 22-10 is next, to amend Title 20, Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Technical Corrections Set Forth in BMC 20.04. And then Ordinance 22-11, to amend Title 20, Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Technical Corrections Set Forth in BMC 20.05, 20.06, and 20.07. Then we will move into legislation for second readings and resolutions, and that will include Ordinance 22-07, to amend City of Bloomington zoning maps by amending the district ordinance and preliminary plan for planned unit development. Again, trinitas is the petitioner. This is 1550 North Arlington Park Drive. And last, Resolution 22-09, Resolution proposing an ordinance to modify the Monroe County local income tax rate, allocate the additional revenues to economic development, and cast votes in favor of the ordinance. And then, we will have one last opportunity for public comment before we discuss our council schedule and adjourn for the evening. So now, let us move to, since we do not have minutes, let's move to reports from council members, and I will start with my, to my right, with Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Wanted to let folks know I have my May constituent meeting this upcoming Tuesday, May 10th. It is at 5:30, and it is still virtual. You can find that link on the council website. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Volin.
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes, thank you. I have two items this evening. First, I wanted to extend invitation to my monthly constituent meeting, scheduled for the first Saturday, so that's this coming up, this Saturday, May 7th, at 1:30 PM. We are meeting virtually via Zoom. You can join via the link at sueforcitycouncil.com. And many of our discussions will focus on issues particularly relevant to District 2, but certainly, anyone from across the city is most welcome. Second thing I want to comment on tonight, I want to acknowledge, on Friday, April 22nd, I had the privilege of doing a ride-along with our Bloomington Police Department. I want to extend my thanks to Chief DeKoff, to Captain Oldham, for helping me arrange that. For those of you who remember the news, that was also the night of a triple shooting. And we saw seriously injured, critically injured individuals downtown. And what was inter, any number of things were fascinating to me that night. But some things I want to acknowledge in particular, fairly early in the evening, about 10:00 PM, we were doing a pass on North Walnut, and passed by some of the establishments there, and a voice comes out of the crowd from a line of individuals waiting to get into a bar, "F the police." Only, not just "F." And I glanced sideways at the officer, Taylor Jighetto, who was with me, just to see her reaction. It was very audible, and she shrugged. She didn't acknowledge it. She moved on. She moved on to the next set of responsibilities she had. Not two hours later, news came of the shooting at Calau nightclub. Taylor was the first, Taylor, Officer Jighetto was the first on scene. And dozens of other officers followed. And I was impressed beyond words at the speed and the professionalism and the integrity and the grace and the dedication that our law enforcement officers showed to their work that night. When shots are fired, they show up regardless of what others have said about them earlier in the evening, and they do their jobs, and they do them well. And I want to express my appreciation for the opportunity to be there that night, and my admiration for the work that they did, and the speed with which they responded and kept folks safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. And to my right, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you. Just a few things. This weekend, of course, is commencement, so I want to congratulate all the students who are finishing their degrees at Indiana University. And also, I wanted to mention, of course, yesterday, we had a primary election. The turnout was very, very low. I think in some precinct committee races, there were like 10 votes. So this is not a good record for Bloomington. We need to step up and vote in primaries and vote in general elections. So y'all have a chance to redeem yourselves in November, and hopefully, the turnout will be better. I want to congratulate everybody who threw their hat in the ring. It's not an easy thing to do, to withstand the scrutiny of an election. And especially, of course, congratulations to those who are moving on to the general. And finally, as the semester winds down at Indiana University where I work, I want to give a shout-out to the graduate students who are still hoping for a meaningful dialogue with the provost, which does not seem to be forthcoming. And the negative impacts on undergraduate students lay clearly at the feet of the upper administration and not the graduate students who have tried very hard to open up a dialogue and just basically advocate for themselves, which everybody should have a right to do. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, just one item. My next constituent meeting is coming up before our next regular session, so I wanted to announce that here. So that is Monday, May 16th, my usual third Monday time, 5:30 PM via Zoom. So you can access that, that link on the city council's calendar, bloomington.in.gov/council, I think. I'm going from memory here. Apologies. But it should be easy to find. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
I have no report. Thanks.
Thank you. I would like to echo a lot of what my colleague, Councilmember Scambaluri, has said. I have been going on police ride-alongs since last October. I did retire from IU about a year and a half ago, and that gives me additional time to be able to do this. And in riding with a variety of officers, including one that I went on this morning with Sergeant Josh Taylor, who is one of our Downtown Resource Officers, he's actually the supervisor of that unit, they are the ones that do manage many of the affairs having to do with, with street issues and people who are experiencing homelessness. The care and compassion of all of our, our officers, whether they are resource officers, whether they're part of our social work team, whether they are patrol officers, members of the Critical Incident Response Team, they are all extremely professional. They're all very willing to talk about their experiences, their human interactions. I've witnessed their human interactions with people experiencing difficulties and seen how they conduct their business, and it just makes it more critical for us to be responsible to them, their safety and their well-being, and to honor the FOP contract that was recently negotiated. And so, the issues that we have before us tonight become critically important as we think about them and the sacrifices they make in order to keep the city safe. And they do that with the utmost of professionalism. They need, they need to get their recognition for that. And I thank Councilmember Scambaluri for also doing ride-alongs because it's really the best way to see the city at all times of night or day. I've been on all three of the shifts, morning, daytime, and night, to see the differences in the different types of calls and the different kinds of responses that our Bloomington Police Officers respond to. So again, I also thank Chief DeKoff and Captain Oldham, who helps us arrange these ride-alongs, and I highly recommend that, that getting, getting to know our officers will go a long way toward solving any kind of issues that we may have in this community. So, thank you. Now, we are going to move to our one report on the docket this evening. This is a Capstone Project report from the Commission on the Status of Women, and we are delighted to have you with us this evening. If you'll approach the podium and state your name, and let us know who else we're going to be hearing from today.
Good evening. My name's Nicole Bennett, and I'm a Commissioner on the Bloomington Commission on the Status of Women. This spring, the BCSW engaged the help of the O'Neill School of Public and Environmental Affairs, one of their graduate student capstone groups, to explore the state of gender equity in Bloomington. Tonight, three of those students will present their findings and recommendations to you all. The BCSW is very grateful for the work and effort they have poured into this initiative over the last few months. And so now, I'll let the students introduce themselves and present their findings to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole, and thank you, Mayor Hamilton, and city council members. My name's Elizabeth Gribbins, and I will be presenting tonight with my colleagues, Adam Schiffris and Christina Sammons. If you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen. So we put together a capstone to assess the status of women in Bloomington. And again, thank you for having us this evening and for letting us do this work with you. There, when we came with the commission at the beginning of the semester, they told us how they are advocating for women's needs and concerns within Bloomington, and they want to promote solutions within the community. So they defined the areas of gender equity in workplace issues, housing security, safety, childcare, and healthcare. And when we looked at these different issues, we made sure to take an intersectional feminist approach to them. Women have various backgrounds, and so it's really important to consider the implications of race, class, disability, sexual orientation and identity in this kind of work. They expressed a need to us for data because some of the surveys that have been previously done have minimal data, and this data is unrepresentative of the various women within Bloomington and Monroe County. So for us, it was really important to give strategies to address this lack of data and representation, and of course, it was necessary to use this intersectional approach to doing our work. So we're going to tell you a little bit about the work we've done. There was a report on gender equity, which Adam and I will share. And then there was also a team that worked on a potential survey to fill in the gaps of the data that was missing. And lastly, there was a grants team who assessed various grant possibilities for doing this survey and for other programming and policy recommendations that we have for you. So again, thank you. In, if you have the copies of the reports, the first deliverable is the report on gender equity. We went over a demographic analysis of Bloomington and Monroe County evaluating current gender equity policies, as well as those of peer cities, kind of for some context. And then, we provided some relevant gender equity policy thought leadership that would be very important in proceeding on these policy recommendations. And then, we of course have the recommendations for you. The survey deliverable contains the analysis of the existing data from the survey and, you know, identifying those gaps that I mentioned, evaluating best practices for going with a new survey. They came up with a question bank with original questions that would fill in this gap, and then a distribution strategy. And lastly, in our third deliverable, we have a grant packet which contains a toolkit for grant opportunities that would work well for the commission, and then how to proceed as the, the commission and the city maybe takes on some of these recommendations we have. So Adam is going to give us a little bit of context about how COVID-19 has impacted gender equity within the city, and then our research as well.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Pleasure to be here. I see some former colleagues and professors and friends in the room, so thank you for hearing us out. When we wanted to look at the data in Bloomington, we wanted to present it in a way that would be as useful over the long term as possible. And so we thought, with a once-in-100-year pandemic, could have a lot of impact on people's experiences, their health, how they are viewing the city government, et cetera, et cetera, and the actual population of Bloomington with many students leaving to go home, and so on. So we decided to use, whenever possible, data from 2019 to try to give more of a steady-state look at what's going on. Of course, policymakers are going to want to know what's happening during COVID-19, but we thought it was good to use 2019 as a baseline. Next slide. And one of the reasons we were tasked with this project was because of the, some missing representation in the Bloomington Community Survey. So if you look at 2019, it's a wonderful survey, full of a lot of useful data, but only 13 Black people answered the survey. And so you really can't draw any meaningful conclusions of what's happening in that community with the survey response so small. If you start dividing that up into upper and lower income, and by gender, you're getting, you know, two or three people, and you just, you can't make any policy conclusions. So, there is, however, some very useful data that wasn't disaggregated, and so we went back to the original data file and broke it down by gender and income. We also removed students for our analysis. So we were tasked with looking at low-income women and women of color in particular, and there's a lot of students who may be doing fine or very well, who may report zero income. So either they have loans, or they have family money, or what have you, but they're not working, or they're only working a small amount. So policymakers should look, oh, what's going on with students? But for the purpose of this analysis and getting a snapshot, we went ahead and removed students for this analysis. Next slide.
Christina is going to talk us through our, the main solution to this lack of data, which is an additional survey that would be more representative.
Hi, everyone. My name is Christina Sammons, and I'm actually in California right now, and I just wanted to say I'm very thrilled to be able to be in the MK program at Indiana University, which was ranked number one. So even though I'm remote, I really, I really hope to be out there one day. So, I'm going to just go through a few best practices for designing a survey. The first thing is a consent form. We recommend that a consent form be attached at the beginning of the survey, and it should stress anonymity for participants. The consent form should inform the potential survey participants with information on the critical elements of the study and what their participation will involve before they even start the survey. We believe that providing this level of detail will serve to build trust, ensure that participants feel comfortable and aware of what they're participating in if they proceed with signing the form and taking the survey. And this is especially important because the nature of the survey and the types of question asked can be kind of sensitive, and we are trying to reach out to underrepresented and vulnerable populations. And so we want to make sure they're very comfortable with giving answers that are accurate. Research also states that the best practice is to put any consent form and to any, and write any questions at the eighth grade reading level. We also recommend that there be an area for the participants to provide their contact information for follow-up, so in case the, the person consents to be contacted later, the, the commission can talk to them to get more detail on specific policy recommendations or specific issues that are brought up. So recommendations for length, format, and question sequencing, all of these are very important. So question, question and survey length, simpler is better. The survey should take absolutely no longer than 20 minutes to complete. The average or median length of surveys is 10 minutes, because of course, people start to lose interest if a survey becomes too long. The format should focus on putting questions in order that is going to get the most responses. So, for example, questions at the beginning of a survey might have unintended effects on responses to questions that follow. In general, questions at the beginning of a survey should be pleasant and easy to answer, so it builds rapport between the survey respondent and the researcher. And, on the other hand, questions that address sensitive topics should be asked towards the end, because people may be uncomfortable and they might not want to continue the survey if those are put at the beginning. It's also very important to minimize bias in writing questions. It's pretty much impossible to eliminate all bias in writing survey questions, but there's two main types of bias that come up a lot in surveys. So one is social desirability bias, and that's the tendency of people to want to be accepted and liked. And so, they are going to make themselves look better when asking, when answering a question that's about sensitive topics, so you need to make sure to phrase things in a way that's very neutral. Similarly, is acquiescence bias. That's the tendency for individuals to agree with statements when provided only two options of, do you agree, or do you disagree with something? People are more likely to say they agree, even if they don't, because they want to seem like they're agreeable. So it's better to not have only two answer choices, to have a range of options, you know, such as strongly disagree, disagree, neutral, agree, strongly agree. Lastly, we really want to emphasize inclusivity, and one of the major ways we should do that is through having translation available for other languages. We definitely recommend having a Spanish option for the entire survey, and we also recommend consulting possibly with the IU language departments to see if there's other non-English language options that are needed or that are, are common in the community or that we should use. As Elizabeth mentioned, our capstone group did write over 40 survey questions that could potentially be used in a future survey, and they targeted the areas that Adam and Elizabeth will identify more in detail later. But major areas were childcare, feelings of, perception of equality in the workplace for women, healthcare, and feelings of safety or feelings of discrimination in the community, because we didn't have that much data about those topics before. Next slide. And so, this slide is focused on distribution. So distribution is how is the best way to distribute, give out the study to make sure we get as many responses as possible. So I'm going to start with the bottom half of the slide. We have three options. So the first option is what I'm going to talk about more in detail, that's distribution in the community, just with volunteers or through the, through the commission. The second option is to partner with IU to possibly have another capstone group that can actually have students go out to talk to people, to distribute the survey, to collect the data, and to aggregate the responses. Lastly, the option is to hire a professional survey company. The benefit of this is that they have rigorous methodology. These companies do surveys all the time. The downside is it would likely be very expensive. So for community-based distribution, we came up with six easy ideas that are pretty cheap or inexpensive to do. So first is email. We, our capstone group provided a list of diverse organizations and businesses in the Bloomington community and in IU, and collected email addresses for contacts, so we could contact those people directly and ask them for help to administer the survey. Secondly, QR codes. So I'm sure you all know what a QR code is, but it's very easy, and people can just hold up their phone camera, and it automatically sends them to a link that could be linked to the survey. So these QR codes could be posted on posters, flyers, anything, and given out. Third, social media, of course. Utilizing city-owned social media platforms, or also to partner with other nonprofit organizations in the community to post the survey on their social media, of course, will spread the word, since social media is so ubiquitous these days. Next, onsite with community partners. The idea of this is that volunteers would actually go into the community and meet with local organizations, or actually go onsite to where the organizations are located, and then collect surveys there. It's similar to public events, which is the last alternative. Public events is more, we were considering that more as having staff or volunteers be at city events or county events to meet with people who walk to the event or to, who attend the event, and then get surveys there. Lastly, text messaging or SMS messaging. This can be done through Qualtrics, which is pretty inexpensive, and text messaging, the benefit is that you can get fast responses, and you can also send reminders to people to complete the survey. And there are studies that have shown that 98% of text messages are read in 10 minutes. So that's a very effective way to get the word out fast and to potentially get responses fast. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Are there any council questions, maybe one or two, to clarify the survey strategy?
Any questions from council at this point? I don't see any. We certainly appreciate having the copy of the report in front of us, too. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So the grant toolkit is fairly self-explanatory within the, the deliverable that you have, and I want to keep us on time, so I'll move directly to our policy recommendations and key data points. So Adam will share some of those key data points, and I will follow with general policy and programming recommendations. We're going to start with employment and pay.
Thank you. As many of you know, there's a significant pay discrepancy between men and women, and there's also discrepancy in poverty levels, with over 13% of Hoosier women in their working age living in poverty, and nearly 40% of Hoosier single mothers living in poverty. I think if you look at some of the most common jobs in Indiana and compare the wages, it really drives the point home. So for example, average cashier, who's a woman, is making about $23,600, and a man's making about $27,600, so 17% more. So a significant gap. And the, next slide.
So we understand there's a challenge to the minimum wage being set at the state level, and we know that the Bloomington raise is restricted to city employees. So we would just recommend that the commission advocate for equitable employment policies and practices through various initiatives such as a business awards program, or official statements from the mayor or city council, and recommendations to other businesses to kind of keep that wage a little bit more equitable. And next, we'll get housing and homelessness.
Thank you. As you all know, there is homeless population in Bloomington, about 46 folks experiencing chronic homelessness, others experiencing more short-term homelessness in terms of affordability. Almost two-thirds of Bloomington households are considered rent-burdened, that's spending more than 30% of their income on rent or potentially a mortgage. That's actually consistent with a lot of peer cities, according to some Chicago Fed data, so something about college towns, it looks like, that makes things a little bit more expensive. And then, the Bloomington Housing Commission produced a study that showed that there was a very large gap in affordable housing units, the very low end. Some of that is students and retirees who aren't showing as much income compared to maybe some assets that they have, or maybe some help that they're getting from family. But certainly, that's not the whole story. Next slide.
We would propose that the commission collaborate with city departments, the other commissions, and county council to encourage policies that ease the creation and accessibility to a range of housing types throughout the city. And we know that there are some challenges to this, of course, especially with transitional housing, but we think this is very important to consider. And now, I'm looking at safety.
To keep us on time, I'm going to focus on some of the data that we pulled out, out of the 2019 Bloomington Community Survey. So if you look at the overall average, overall feelings of safety in 2019- So if you look at the overall average, overall feelings of safety in the 2019 survey, about 20% of respondents said safety was fair or poor. But if you slice that down to low-income women, that jumps to 34%. And if you look at the other groups, it's more than twice that level. You're seeing a significant difference in overall feelings of safety. If you look at the question on safety downtown at night, there's also a significant difference. You have a, two-thirds of folks saying they feel pretty safe downtown at night, less than half of low-income women. So when you start breaking down the data by gender and income, you start to see some differences and some opportunities for progress. Next slide.
Safety is a challenging topic because it obviously depends on a person's race, their income, their neighborhood, and other demographic factors like this. And we know that both under and overpolicing could lead women to feel a lack of safety. So this really, this is why this intersectional feminist framework is important because we need to kind of address these differences and perceptions of safety. Really, we need more investigation here as well because there wasn't a lot from the data that we have to directly address lack of feeling of safety. So we would suggest that the commission work with the public and relevant community stakeholders to really assess and then address the racial and economic disparities in police citations as well as overall feelings of safety for Bloomington's women. And next, we have healthcare.
So healthcare is pretty consistent across gender and income levels. You know, half of everyone thinks healthcare is unaffordable. And so that's a national problem that's reflected locally.
Though investigating and improving community access to healthcare information and resources is what we think would be the most effective moving forward with a focus on affordability. So we know that maybe transportation to these resources could be the issue, or people just don't know how to sign up for certain services or what they're eligible for. And obviously, this comes with a big challenge, that healthcare policy are kind of restricted, those decisions are restricted to the federal government or even state level. So we understand that this could be a challenge for the city of Bloomington. And next, looking at childcare, there are childcare deserts, what's called in Bloomington and Monroe County. These are where there's barely any access to childcare for people. There's not only a lack of facilities, but a lack of staffing. And then obviously, families are concerned about quality. They want to send their children to quality daycare or childcare centers and even pre-K programs. And then the issue with affordability is further exacerbated by pay inequality that Adam mentioned in earlier slides. So because this exists, you know, it's going to be a difficult thing to tackle, but really it's important to also understand the impacts of COVID-19 on childcare workers and families, women kind of having to stay home from work. So what we propose is working with partner organizations to ease childcare access and affordability because there are some great organizations that are kind of doing this work to expand access for people. And lastly, Adam is going to recommend an intersectional dashboard. So this would expand data collection strategies with intentions to reach underrepresented community groups and then require that future data are analyzed by gender, income, race, and other demographic categories since that was the main issue we had, delving into data analysis for this project.
Thank you so much. And I think we should have said it earlier on, but we were, we were sort of tasked with sifting through things and finding some of the interesting data points and the problems. But Bloomington is doing a lot of things really well, and a lot of, a lot of the citizens of Bloomington are really thriving. And so this recommendation is designed to, I would say it's a sign of progress. It's, it's designed to really dig down and find the folks that are having a hard time by supercharging Bloomington Community Survey or conducting an additional survey that we put a model together for. And either, either method that you use, you're going to get a lot more information on communities that may have vulnerable populations, and it's going to tell you where there's problems and it's going to tell you where things are okay and programs are working. So this is sort of aspirational. I think in terms of sample size, it's going to be much easier for a much larger city to pull something like this off. But I think it's, it's good for policymakers to consider and think about this model and think about including some elements going forward. So if you dramatically grow the Bloomington Community Survey or conduct another survey and you're able to do data breakdowns that are much, much more refined, say, low-income women of color, for example, then you can pick some key metrics where it appears that there are some issues in these marginalized groups and set some goals over multiple years and track those goals as you get surveyed every two years. And then eventually, once you have a good baseline, you start to integrate these into the city budgeting process. That's it.
Thank you all again. And, you know, in light of kind of the recent events that have happened with maybe some imminent threats to women's rights in the country, I really appreciate you all having this conversation with us, letting us do this work for you, and hopefully moving forward to really address the concerns of women in Bloomington. So we'll take whatever questions you have.
Well, thank you very much. We are kind of at our time, but I will ask if there are any questions for our scholars from O'Neal. Seeing none, again, we appreciate all of your effort on this. Again, it's nice to have this report in front of us to refer to, and we will certainly look forward to working with you and, and more students from O'Neal with, with very important issues like this. Thank you all for being here with us tonight. All right, moving on, we are to council committees. Are there any council committee reports this evening? I see none other than the one that I would like to report on. The Jack Hopkins Social Services Committee has been hard at work, and we are again considering the applications from 30 organizations throughout the city who serve our low-income residents with the services that they provide. The presentations last Thursday were stellar. Everybody's having a difficult time coming out of COVID. Many of our nonprofits have had difficulties raising funds due to the fact that we've been out of commission for the last several years. And make no mistake, we're not out of COVID completely, but the work of these agencies is remarkable, and it was really inspirational to hear from all of them. We have $317,000 to distribute, and there were $563,000 and change in requests. So needless to say, the committee has a hard job ahead. We are going to be having a pre-allocation meeting on the 10th, and then we'll make our announcements as to how the allocations are going to be distributed on May the 17th. And again, my thanks to the committee, my fellow colleagues, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Scambalory, Councilmember Sims, joined by community members Mark Fraley, Tim Mayer, and Lauren McAllister. And again, our rankings were due today. I hope everybody got them in on time, and hard decisions are ahead of us for the Jack Hopkins Committee this year. All right, at this point, we are now to the public comment section for the first round of any comments from the public on matters not on this evening's agenda that has already been announced. And if anyone is here in chambers who would like to make a comment, you can queue up to the podium, sign in, and be ready to state your name. Are there any people from home on the Zoom channel who would like to make a comment?
I'll mention to the folks that may be joining via Zoom that if you would like to comment, you can indicate your desire to do so by raising your hand in Zoom. You should be able to find the raise hand button under your control bar by clicking the reactions button or the more button. If you have dialed in on a, on a phone, you may need to dial star nine to raise your hand. And at the moment, I've seen one hand raised on Zoom.
All right. And we have someone who looks like he's behind the podium. Are you ready to sign in and state your name?
Do I sign in here?
Is there a sheet on the podium?
Right here.
Yeah, right. And again, how many hands are raised at this point? Do we see a lot of them or a few of them?
I see just one hand raised on Zoom.
All right. So do you think we can be safe at five minutes? All right. Yeah, well, you, once you state your name, you will have five minutes to make your comment.
Okay. Can I just say one thing before starting, and that's a big shout-out to Michael White at BCAT for 36 years. Way to go, Michael. My name is Hugh Kramer. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the environmental and health hazards of gas-powered leaf blowers. Following is merely the tip of the iceberg. Environmental hazards. An individual gas-powered leaf blower emits 500 times the level of hydrocarbons of a modern automobile. A widely cited study conducted at the American Automobile Association's Automotive Research Center found that the hydrocarbon emissions from a half-hour of yard work with a two-stroke leaf blower are about the same as a 3,900-mile drive from Texas to Alaska in a Ford F-150 pickup truck. Translating this to Bloomington, one-half hour of gas-powered blowing is equivalent to an F-150 making 785-mile trips. Almost all gas blowers use two-stroke engines. The two-stroke engine is vastly dirtier and less fuel-efficient than automobiles because it sloshes together a mixture of gasoline and oil in the combustion chamber and then spews out as much as one-third of that fuel as an unburned aerosol and black carbon, both major contributors to global warming. Health hazards. One study found that each cubic meter of exhaust from an idling two-stroke engine contains 60,000 times the safe level of exposure of benzene, a carcinogenic pollutant, of exposure. This, of course, has an element of environmental justice. The health risks associated with the lawn and garden equipment are highest for those who operate this equipment continuously. They're exposed to very high levels of pollutants for many hours each day. They're also exposed to very high noise levels that can induce permanent hearing loss if proper ear protection is not always worn. These operators are typically low-wage workers. This puts additional disproportionately high health risks upon this low-income population who are some of the least able to avoid the risks and/or pay for it. We banned burning garbage and public smoking for these same reasons. However, these don't make any noise, which takes a big hit on quality of life in Bloomington. Extreme noise. The physiological effects of noise pollution are real and well-documented. Noise causes loss of community and is both a sign and a cause of aggression and violence. The most powerful leaf blowers can create a stream of air exceeding 250 miles per hour with noise levels as high as an ear-piercing 112 decibels at close range, with normal conversation being around 60 decibels. Keep in mind that decibel levels are logarithmic, so every 10-point increase is twice as loud. One acoustic study found that in a densely settled neighborhood, gas-powered blowers rated at 75 decibels of noise affect 15 times as many households as battery-powered blowers with the same 75-decibel rating. Gas-powered blowers are clearly audible up to a quarter a mile, and they are routinely used less than 50 feet from unconsenting pedestrians and neighboring homes that may be occupied by telecommuters, first responders, shift workers, retirees, children, the ill or disabled, and pets. In our neighborhood, they go Friday and Saturday nights often, sometimes Sundays, two years ago on Christmas Eve until 7:30, and all day on New Year's Day, the same day. We have no regulations whatsoever for how long these things can be used or when. What's most difficult is that we never know when they're going to start up, and once they do, how long it's going to last. So instead of enjoying a peaceful weekend evening outside, too often we've had to pack everything up if we made a dinner or something and move everything inside because of the toxic fumes, which still come in the house, and the noise we can still smell, hear clearly. In summary, there isn't much the city could do to reduce carbon emissions that would have the same impact as regulating leaf blowers. Dozens of cities and towns in the U.S. have banned or restricted gas blowers. Our neighbor, our neighbor in Evanston, Illinois, can you, in Evanston, Illinois has a good model, as you can see. They're allowed March 30th to May 15th and October 15th to the first Thursday of December. They are prohibited May 16th, October 14th. What that does is it keeps people from blowing little blades of grass and dust after mowing and cleaning up their yard. This is 75% of the use currently of gas blowers, and that is blowing dust and grass clippings from hardscapes.
And Mr. Kramer, you are at your five minutes. So I don't know if you are ready to conclude or not, but we appreciate your coming.
Thank you.
And who do we have on our Zoom connection?
Yes, first up on Zoom is Jim Shelton.
Good evening, Council. Jim Shelton with the chamber, speaking again tonight on behalf of Court of Point and Special Advocate Programer Casas. Want to reiterate to the public and to you folks that Casas' summer training will start in just about a month. It'll run from June 6th through the 29th. It'll be Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 8:30. The program has decided to conduct this training in a face-to-face manner rather than via Zoom, so it's great to be back to that mode of, of training. And it will be in a new location. The CASA office is moving from what is known to us longtime folks as the former Hayes Market Building is going to move into the showers area of CSC's business section in room 201. So the training will be located there. It will be, it will cover the things that the potential Casas will need to know. They don't need to bring any past experience or anything. And then the Casas, after they're sworn in, will work a case with one of the CASA staff. So they'll always have somebody there who's experienced and can help them if they run into any difficulties or if a court hearing comes up at a time that they're going to be out of town. So we ask folks to please think about this. It's a wonderful volunteer opportunity. We've got about 50 children still that we don't have a volunteer to serve as their CASA. So you can go to monroecountacasa.org or click on, and click on the volunteer link and get information, or you can call 333-2272 and talk to a staff member and get any questions you might have answered. So it's a very rewarding volunteer opportunity. I just had a case that closed right before Christmas with a little four-year-old who had been out of, from his parents for most, three of his four years, was being reunited with his parents. They had overcome drug addiction and having been incarcerated and had really gotten their act together and were reunited with the little guy. And when a case is over, the CASA turns in all their information. It's, it's not something where you keep up with people. But a couple weeks ago, on the weekend, all of a sudden, out of the blue, I got a text with a couple of pictures of this little guy, his grandmother, who had been the rock that had really helped this case work out successfully, and it was his fifth birthday celebration. And then there was another picture of his mom and dad with his new little brother that he will by golly make sure you know is his little brother. And it was just very heartwarming. They sent it to me and to the Family Case Manager from DCS, and we were both really surprised and just really enjoyed it. So that's the kind of benefit you can have in helping families get through very difficult times and hopefully get the child reunited, and if not, work toward getting them into another permanent situation, which usually means adoption. So I thank you for the opportunity to share that information, and I hope people will think about taking part in this next training. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Anyone else from the public this evening? All right, anyone else from chambers? Looks like not. So that concludes our public comment period. We now move to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any this evening? And seeing none, we are ready for legislation for first readings.
President, that's ordinance 2207 to be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2207 to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by amending the district ordinance and preliminary plan for a planned unit development regarding 1550 North Arlington Park Drive. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2207 would amend the preliminary plan and district ordinance for the Trinitas PUD to amend the list of permitted uses and to allow for the creation of lots for signage.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we need to make an explanation as to that this is possibly going to be heard in our second reading this evening?
That's correct. The agenda for this evening has first readings and second readings swapped for this reason. This is an ordinance that the petitioner has actually asked the council to consider rejecting tonight, which I believe we'll have staff here to provide a brief explanation, but just note that you'll also see this item listed under second readings for that reason.
Thank you very much. Moving on.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2208 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2208 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Technical Corrections Set Forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20. This petition contains -- the synopsis is as follows. This petition contains corrections or clarifications in the UDO. These errors range from missing references to terminology correction to missing text to sinking references across the UDO. There are 22 amendments identified, some appearing multiple times in the code.
Thank you, and I will be referring this, Ordinance 22-08, to the Committee the Whole that will meet May 11th next week, beginning at 6:30.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2209 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read?
One more time? Sorry. Ordinance 2209 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Technical Corrections Set Forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.03. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments related to use regulations in the UDO. These amendments add, remove, or edit existing texts to clarify and amend standards. There are eight amendments identified.
Thank you, and I will also refer this, Ordinance 22-09, to the Committee the Whole on May 11th, beginning at 6:30.
I move that Ordinance 2210 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2210 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Technical Corrections Set Forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.04. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments related to design requirements for uses allowed in the code. These amendments add, remove, or edit existing texts to clarify and amend standards. There are 21 amendments identified.
Thank you. Also referring, Ordinance 22-10, to the Committee the Whole, beginning May 11th at 6:30.
I move that Ordinance 2211 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2211 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Technical Corrections Set Forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.05, 20.06, and 20.07. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments to subdivision standards, administrative procedures, and definitions in the code. These amendments add, remove, or edit existing texts to clarify and amend standards, procedures, and definitions. There are 12 amendments identified.
Thank you, and I will also refer Ordinance 22-11 to the Committee the Whole, May 11th, starting at 6:30. We now move to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2207 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2207 to amend the City of Bloomington zoning maps by amending the district ordinance and preliminary plan for a planned unit development regarding 1550 North Arlington Park Drive. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2207 would amend the preliminary plan and district ordinance for the Trinitas PUD to amend the list of permitted uses and to allow for the creation of lots for signage.
All right.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2207 be adopted.
Second.
And who do we have with us this evening to give us a presentation? Joining us by Zoom?
Mr. Eric Gurulik from our Planning Department may be here via Zoom and can provide a brief explanation of the request associated with this item. Mr. Gurulik, are you able to unmute?
Is there a backup presenter?[933.12][933.12](laugh) Is Mr. Gurulik having technical difficulties?
It looks like Mr. Gurulik is on the meeting. I'm not sure if he's having any technical issues on his end. I'm happy to present the request as I know it, and perhaps while I'm speaking, he can try to log out and log back in. This is a zoning request to an existing PUD. The petitioner, Trinitas, was requesting two changes to their district ordinance and a change to their preliminary plan. As I understand, the change to their preliminary plan would allow for the creation of small lots on their property that would exist solely for the purpose of some signage that would direct folks to the entrance to their property. That portion of their request received a negative recommendation at the Plan Commission. Another portion of their request affected their district ordinance and changed the list of allowed uses for the property. They, I believe, intend to use one of the parcels or one of the areas on their PUD for video or podcast studio space, and so that portion of their request received a positive recommendation from the Plan Commission to add that use as an allowed use in their district ordinance. Since the Plan Commission made its recommendations, I believe, staff, planning staff have been working with the petitioner and communicated that their interpretation of the existing allowed uses in the petitioner's district ordinance already allowed the petitioner to use their property for the video and podcast studio space under an office use for their parcel. Based on that and based on the negative recommendation for the small lots for signage that they requested that received a negative recommendation, the petitioner is actually asking for the council to reject this ordinance. They had requested that they be allowed to withdraw it, which typically would mean that the council doesn't vote, takes no action. By doing that, the council would actually be allowing the positive recommendation from the Plan Commission on that change to the allowed uses to take effect. Since the petitioner is already able to go ahead with that use, the cleaner option that staff recommends and that the petitioner is actually requesting to put them back in the same position they were in before they filed the petition is for the council to go ahead and reject this ordinance tonight. So that was a quick and dirty explanation. It doesn't look like Mr. Gurulik has since unmuted, so I'll do my best to answer any question I see. Mr. Gurulik, he's popped up.
There he is. How did he do?
I am so sorry I missed the prompt there.
That's quite all right. I went ahead and stole your thunder. If you have anything to add, please feel free.
No, no, you summed everything up there, really. It's just that simple. They just want to withdraw the petition.
All right. Seems straightforward enough. Any questions from council? Councilmember Volan.
Yes, I'd like to ask our representative to the Plan Commission why the negative recommendation on the signage. Could he explain what the discussion was like on that particular point that was mentioned?
Thank you, Councilmember Volan.
It was very straightforward, and it was just a request by Trinitas to just withdraw it. They didn't think it was necessary anymore, and the administration and Mr. Gurulik just were like, everything's okay, so, yes.
But I mean, you voted on the -- You voted on the rejection of their request for signage. Could you explain what the nature of that issue was and why the Plan Commission rejected it?
If I recall correctly, that was not generally a permitted use for the size of the sign and the designation of that much of the property for it, and so it was -- was not a recommended use, and so --
Was it a unanimous vote, or was it close?
I believe it was a unanimous vote. Mr. Gurulik, do you remember if that came out unanimous?
Yes, I believe it was unanimous along both recommendations, for the positive recommendation for the amendment to the district ordinance for the list of uses, and then the negative recommendation for the preliminary plan to alter the size of the property to create these long slivers of land that were exclusively just for the presence of signs.
Very good. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from council? Anyone from the public wish to make a comment on Ordinance 22-7?
And I'll just mention, if any members of the public wish to comment who are on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature to indicate your desire to do so. If you're not able to locate that, you can also send a message via chat that you would like to speak, and we can recognize you that way. And I see no hands going up at the moment.
All right. So we are back to council for any final comment on Ordinance 22-07. Councilmember Volan.
Yeah, just to understand it, and this is kind of a quament, we're voting to withdraw, or we're simply allowing them to withdraw?
The petitioner has requested that the council actually vote no on this and reject the ordinance.
So by rejecting it, we're not rejecting the PUD, we're rejecting the changes to the PUD?
Correct. The PUD that they are asking to amend has already been approved. What's before you tonight is their request to amend that PUD.
Great, thank you. I understand the question now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on Ordinance 22-7? Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarker?
We're voting no to reject.
No.
Volan?
Wait a minute. I am confused. I'm sorry.
Yes means rejection?
We are being basically directed to vote no.
But are we --
Because we're voting for adoption. That's the vote on the table, so no, we don't want to adopt it. Okay, yes.
Everybody clear now?
No.
We are voting to adopt, and so, no.
The motion, I believe, that's on the table was a motion to adopt, so if you'd like to reject this, a no vote is in order.
Very good. Thank you.
Sorry.
Councilmember Volan?
No.
Sims?
No.
Scambaluri?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Smith?
No.
And Piedmont Smith?
No.
Thank you. All right. That fails. 090. Thank you, everyone.
Madam President, I move that Resolution -- does this need to be introduced because it's a continuation? Yes? I move that Resolution 2209 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Maybe. Resolution 2209, resolution proposing an ordinance to modify the Monroe County local income tax rate, allocate the additional revenues to economic development, and cast votes in favor of the ordinance. The synopsis is as follows. Resolution 2209 proposes an ordinance to the Monroe County Local Income Tax Council that would impose an economic development tax rate, also known as edit. The Monroe County Local Income Tax Council is the body that must approve modifications to the local income tax, and it consists of four member fiscal bodies: the City of Bloomington Common Council, the Monroe County Council, the Town of Ellisville Town Council, and the Town of Steinsville Town Council. This resolution would cast some percentage of the City of Bloomington's votes on the Monroe County Local Income Tax Council in favor of the ordinance modifying the local income tax to impose an edit, depending on the votes of the individual members of the City of Bloomington Common Council. Your committee due pass recommendation was 304.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2209 be adopted.
Second.
All right. Mr. Lucas, if you can just remind us where we left off. This is a continuation of a meeting that has been continued to today. Do we have any need for any presentation before we move into what we would like to discuss tonight? I understand there is an amendment that we might want to have heard.
That's correct. This item was postponed from last Wednesday's meeting. The council and the administration are free to go through any initial presentations. I don't know that there are any. There was one amendment prepared by several council members and distributed ahead of tonight's meeting. If the council would like to simply move to that amendment and offer a chance for the sponsor to introduce it, it could do so and proceed from there.
Thank you. Will the sponsors wish to?
Sure. This is an amendment to change the --
Pardon me?
Yes, I'd like to move the option of Amendment 1 to Resolution 2209.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Oh, just introduce it. Now you can go.
Oh, thank you. Well, this amendment changes the proposal, overall proposal, from .855 increase to .69. So this is a sincere attempt to forge a consensus on doing what's best for the city. It's been a collective and difficult effort to work together, even though we may not agree on everything. I have come to realize that forging a consensus is really hard work. Making sausage is a really nasty, nasty process. It's really challenging. In fact, over the last few weeks, the bruising weeks, working on a lit, I'm now carrying a first aid kit just in case, because it's been really tough. The amendment and the lit, it's not perfect. I wish it was lower. I know lots of you out there do, too. I want to thank each and every one of the council members and the administration for working really hard on this, because we're all trying to do what's best. We worked very hard on this consensus. I and others advocated for an increase in police salaries that will hopefully keep our police departments fully staffed and help keep our community safe. I wish Mayor Hamilton's proposal did not link the police salary contract increases with the rest of the overall lit, but it did. I don't really like it, but it did. We would not have been able to fund the increase in police salaries without the rest of the proposal. Mayor Hamilton said it couldn't be done any other way. Okay, and so it needed a consensus from all council members. Let's recognize that the lit is really going to do a lot of good things in different areas in public safety, in social services, in transit, climate action, and essential city services. The increase in tax will be on income, and so those most vulnerable, like the elderly and people with disabilities who live mostly on Social Security, which is not taxed in Indiana, will be spared much of an increase or any increase at all. Higher earners will pay more. So to clarify, somebody with a taxable income of $100,000 will pay an additional $690 a year. Somebody with a taxable income of $30,000 will pay approximately $207 a year more, or $17.25 per month. So I bring this amendment forward to reduce the package from approximately $18 million to about $14.5 million. Do I wish it were less, and do some of us wish it were less? Yes. But the way the proposal was structured, we are not going to be able to increase the police salaries, which is so needed, especially now, given the recent shootings and the violence in our community, without this hard-fought compromise between and among council members and the mayor as well. For those who are going to be disappointed, I'm sorry, but I promise to continue to keep watch. I'm not going to let you down. But I promise to continue to keep watch on municipal expenditures in the upcoming budget in August. Thank you. And now I'd like to turn it over to any other cosponsors who wish to make a comment.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to who have co-sponsored? No further comments? All right, any questions for the sponsors of amendment one? Councilmember Rallo?
I have a question for the administration. May I? Mayor Hamilton, perhaps? I understand Controller Underwood is not here this evening. So my first question is, with this tax and funds going to essential city services, are we well positioned to compensate employees of the city in pace with cost of living increases? Yes. Great, good. Second question, if I might. So I appreciate your effort to work with council. It's not an easy task. Everyone here has their own opinions about this local income tax and we're trying to find points of agreement. And we had discussions last time about utilizing other funds. One avenue that we talked about was the Creed District, expiring Creed districts and utilizing those funds of a total of 16 million. Two capital projects that are included in this, these expenditures of the revenues of the lit for a new police station or combined campus, police and fire campus, which I believe are important. You've allocated 3 million of the 16 million. Could you tell me why we can't utilize more or why you're unwilling to utilize more to reduce the effective rate, tax rate?
Sure. Thanks for the question. I will first try to channel Controller Underwood, who I know would like to be here and speak for himself, but he's on a long scheduled and much needed vacation break right now. We don't, we did not recommend any use of the Creed because our general outlook has been it's important in a city of this size with a budget of this complexity and dynamic nature to retain surpluses, cash balances that let us meet future needs, whether they're unforeseen downturns or emergencies, or whether they're unanticipated opportunities that will advance the city. So our recommendation was not to use the cash balance, for example, in the Creed. But in order to work with you in response to some of the urging, we have scrubbed, if you will, looked really diligently to identify what we feel could responsibly be cash used today to avoid expenditures in the future. That amount that we felt responsible was $3 million. We, there is no exact science to this. We have certain goals for reserves, as you know, in the two operating accounts. We have other reserves that have been very important for the city's response to either difficulties or opportunities. And all I can say is that we are, we believe we can do this responsibly, but we do not believe we can do more responsibly that would ameliorate the need for the revenue. We need revenue to do many things, as you know, and believe that's the limit that we responsibly can do. This administration and this council, previous administrations and previous councils have kept Bloomington in a prudent, safe place fiscally, and we want to continue that.
Just to drill a little deeper, so we're asking taxpayers to tighten their belts here. By necessity, they will, because cost of living is going up, and we don't know to what extent it will. So this comes at a very difficult time, as we've discussed. I see that this, I don't know, I'd like to know how, where you see this fund being utilized, for emergency purposes or some other purpose in mind? It seems to me that this would demonstrate a judicious use of this fund. This isn't, this, we have our reserves, we can draw on those, they're healthy reserves. This is added funds. I think we're all in agreement that a new police campus is needed. I'm wondering what better purpose it could be used for?
Well, I know last time we met, Controller Underwood shared some of the uses that had been done in the past with this fund to try to anticipate what could be used in the future. I would note, the administration proposed an $18 million tax because that's what we believe is needed to advance all the interests of the community. That was not done lightly, it was done very carefully. We have tightened the belt from that proposal, three and a half million dollars down to reflect interest, and we've tried to identify ways to do that. We have reduced virtually every item in that request, which is tightening the belt. We'll put some pressure on the essential services, on the transit, on the, on the, all those components. We've protected one specific one, the 1.5 million for police. All I can do, councilmember, is tell you, this is the advice of an administration and a fiscal management that says we need to protect balances. We don't know what inflation will be like two years from now. We don't know what may happen in the next year or two or five, and having sufficient reserves and finances to deal with those, we believe is prudent. It's served us well in the past. We totally agree that we should tighten our belt, and we have, as I've talked about before. But I think in a way, we're trying to take risk, in my view, in order to avoid what are prudent and modest and important regular expenditures that we know we need going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Councilmember Volan?
Yes, I'd like to piggyback on this question, Mr. Mayor. I've served as long as Councilmember Rallo, and I recall on many occasions asking about the rainy day fund and the similar funds. Can you tell us about how those funds were used over the two years of the pandemic? How the rainy day funds were affected by the pandemic?
Basically, and again, I'm channeling Controller Underwood, but without charts in front of me. We really used the prudent reserves that we had in the general fund and the Parks General Fund to do two main things. One, we did use them to backstop shortfalls in the operating budgets. That was in various departments across the government. We also used them, as you know, for investments directly into the community to help our community weather the storm. We made available loans, we made available programs, we increased Jack Hopkins money. We did what we would call countercyclical work together, and I think that proved to serve our community quite well.
To what extent did the rainy day funds deplete?
Well, the budget projections showed that fund would go from down to about two months instead of four months of operating expenses. They did not go that far down in cash, and as far as I know, we expect that 2021 concluded with about four months. That's including reversions, which we had many of, difficulty of filling spots, challenges to various things. So we are at about four months right now, but of course, we still don't know what the next year, two or three may be like.
No, but I mean, that was, we were often told by the state that we, I mean, in the years prior to the pandemic, we were told that perhaps our rainy day fund was a little too high. And, you know, we always tried to get it down, but I mean, as mayor, would you say that you were grateful for that four-month cushion when the pandemic hit?
It was essential, absolutely. It was very important to help us as a government avoid any layoffs, to let, to keep the services that our public needed, and to incur, to cover costs, and to do that kind of investment to help our community cover. Absolutely, I think it was incredibly important.
Thank you.
Additional questions from council regarding amendment one? And seeing now, we will now go to the public to see if there are any comments either here in chambers or from home, from our Zoom connections, on amendment one, which is a reduction from what was originally proposed.
And if there are those that would like to comment, you can indicate your desire to do so by using the raise hand feature. You should be able to find the raise hand button in your control bar under either the reactions tab or the more tab. And if you have called into the meeting from a phone line, you should be able to raise your hand by dialing star nine. If all of that fails and you're still not able to locate the raise hand button, please send a message via chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to comment, and we can recognize you that way. And I want to give it a few moments. I don't see any hands raised just yet.
Right, I don't see anyone jumping up to the podium here from chambers. We'll give it a few minutes before we come back to council. And in returning back to council, are there any additional questions or comments on amendment one? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes. I am a co-sponsor of amendment one. I think it is a hard-won compromise. I think it maintains what I feel are the most important parts of the proposed budget that goes along with this local income tax increase, and that is the climate change investments, and in particular, a significant annual investment in public transit, which, as I said last week, is really needed in order to get people out of their single occupancy vehicle cars and choosing to use the bus, those choice riders, in order to significantly reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And so I think that all of these initiatives, the Sunday service, the East-West Express Line, the increased investment in paratransit and microtransit, and especially the increased frequency to at least every 30 minutes, and the subsidies to low-income riders, these represent a very strong package that I think can put our transit service up to the level that people will choose to ride. Then we still do have a million dollars in the Economic Equity Fund. I recognize that people who do earn incomes, not just social security or disability, but have jobs that earn incomes, but not very high income, will be adversely impacted by this additional portion that the county will be taking. But I see a lot of the investments on this list as benefiting, in particular, people who are low-income in Bloomington and Monroe County. Of course, the transit is a big part of that, but we've also dedicated a million dollars per year, according to this plan, to directly benefit folks in need through our social service partners and other levels of government. So I think that, seeing that those items are still in place, and of course, we do have the funds to make good on our tentative agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, so I am in favor of this amendment, and I hope it gets the support of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan?
I'd like to defer for a minute. If somebody else wanted to speak, I'm still trying to think something up.
Anyone else? Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. Well, as we've been saying, the nature of this tax has restricted, I suppose, by, well, actually restricted by state statute, is that it's a regressive tax, it's a flat tax. So the burden is disproportionately borne on low to moderate income residents. It comes at a time of economic pressures for these residents. They're acute and increasing. We don't know exactly what these pressures will manifest. We don't know what inflation will look like even six months from now. Inflation is as highest right now as it's been in 40 years. So it seems incumbent on us as the fiduciary body of the city to tighten, to assist the administration in tightening our belt, and I appreciate the progress that's been made. It hasn't been easy, and I know it's taken a lot of work by my colleagues, and I appreciate that, and the administration. So now we are talking about a reduction from eight point eight five five to point six nine, meaning that by my simple calculation, a couple or an individual with a state-adjusted gross income has their impact reduced from $430 a year to 345. So that's real progress, and so I acknowledge that. But I think we can do more. I noted last week that the public safety lit that we passed several years ago runs a surplus. The surplus, the account balance is about $5 million. The surplus, as I read it, produces over five years about $5 million. And that's taking into account the capital needs described in our budget. So we have excess funds there. We also have the expiring Creed districts, which we've just talked about. This is the Community Revitalization Enhancement District, tax district. We have total fund balances of about $16 million. Three million are being applied to bring the tax rate down to point six nine, but I think that we can do better. And I will be supporting this amendment because it's headed in the right direction. But in a moment, I would like to make a motion to postpone deliberations until next week so that we can allow more time to reduce this tax rate even more for low and moderate income residents. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from council? Councilmember Volan?
I am grateful I referred to my colleague, because he said some very interesting things. First, that he supports the amendment, despite the fact that he wants to postpone it to try to cut it further. I'm not sure I know quite what that means. But I'll point out a couple of aspects of this amendment that I would urge him to think about. One of them is, I've been pretty consistent about saying that I want to see, I've always been supportive of a point two five increase for transit specifically, always in our opportunity for transit. We have seen what that kind of money would do for public transit in Bloomington and the vicinity. It would be transformative, nothing less than transformative. Now, I've done the math on it, and this compromise brings us down to point one eight one. That's how much we're, point one eight one of the point six nine will be going to transit. We've already compromised on it. I've already compromised more than I've wanted to on it, because that's been my number one issue, and I've been happy for it to be tied to public safety salaries that Councilmember Smith alluded to as his primary reason for supporting this amendment and this ordinance, or this resolution. But, and I look forward to opportunities to increasing the lit by another point oh seven to get to that eventual point two five local income tax for transit, something that I don't know anyone who doesn't support it. I have not heard anyone actually say we shouldn't be donating, devoting any money like this to transit. But the other thing that Councilmember Rallo brought up just now are the Creed districts, and the district six representative here is quite jealous of the $10 million in the downtown Creed district, which is, if you look at the map of it, it's available on the city website, you'll see that it's mostly, matches the extended version of the courthouse square historic district. And I, for one, on behalf of all the businesses that have ever paid into it, all the taxes that have been paid into it, do not want to see it going outside of the Creed district. And so unless we're planning to build a headquarters in the boundary where the money was collected, I'm more than, I'm going to be quite hostile to, I mean, I'm already sort of upset that 3 million of the 10 remaining is going to be used for this, even though I support the construction of new headquarters for the. of new headquarters for the police and fire departments. I would rather see it happen, if it's going to happen, it should happen on land that's in the Creed district proper. But I would caution Counselmember Rallo before he puts his eye on any more of that money to ask, is this really the intention of the dollars collected in that district? After all these years, this is finally what we're going to use it for, as a way to avoid a tax that we've already established is for a community that has been deprived of tax revenue ever since the governor of Indiana in 1973 have reduced our ability to collect taxes in other ways, froze taxes at a low level that we've been working to deal with for decades. My colleague has served with me for almost two decades, and we've been, we voted on every budget in that time. And I don't think that he's alone, or I'm alone, in being proud of our relative frugality, our relative attention to detail, that we've always had balanced budgets, and we've been very careful stewards of public money. But we've been working with less per capita than most communities in Indiana. And the mayor's done a good job of demonstrating that. So those two things, I would say, ought to temper Counselmember Rallo's concern about delay, especially if he supports the amendment already but wants to, I mean, that ultimate statement doesn't make sense to me. Either he supports .69 or he doesn't. If he believes that we can make it smaller, then, you know, I don't see how he supports it. But I would hope that if his objective is to reduce it, and that objective fails tonight, that he will support the .69. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from counsel? Crickets. Well, let me say, this has been a most difficult decision for all of us. I think we have heard from a good many, from our staff, from our frontline workers, as to the need for additional revenues in order to provide the services that this community deserves. Part of what's bothered me from the jump with this is that this is about the city of Bloomington, but this tax council that we are a part of also includes all of Monroe County. And it was my wish from the beginning that it could have been a more collaborative effort, more understanding the needs of the rural areas and people outside of Bloomington who maybe don't have the same kind of wealth of social service networks that we have here in Bloomington, that we can help to kind of offset some of the burden of an additional tax on people who are already struggling, who are at the bottom. And so that has weighed heavily in my decision and on my mind, as we realize that where goes the Bloomington City Council, that goes the whole rest of the county. So I have certainly appreciated all the hard work of my colleagues who have gone back and forth and have reduced this, what I consider to be a very significant increase in local income tax, to a number that I can, you know, in the spirit of compromise, support. But I look forward to the future when we're talking about budgets and we're talking about service, and when we're talking about our relationship with our colleagues in the county, because we are all in this together. And we have more here to consider than just what's best for the city of Bloomington. Although I can in good conscience support Amendment One and respect that the hard work that goes into any negotiation, you end up not pleasing everyone, but the FOP contract must be honored. And so with that, I will support Amendment Number One. Anyone else? All right. Are we ready for a roll call in support of Amendment One? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Is he not making a motion? Counselmember Rallo?
Pardon me?
Was there an additional comment that I missed down here?
Was he not going to make a motion to postpone?
I was, but I was going to allow the vote.
So relative to the ordinance, or to, okay.
This is Amendment One on the table right now.
Thanks.
All right. Yes, can we call the roll on Amendment One?
Counselmember Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And that passes 9-0-0. So now we go back to the resolution as amended.
Madam President, I move that deliberations in Resolution 2209 be continued to a special session on May 11th at 5:30 p.m. The purpose is to work further to reduce the rate.
Does that have a second?
I'll second.
All right, and hearing a second. Where are we in terms of debate? Is this a question? Counsel questions?
Well, there's been a motion to postpone consideration of Resolution 2209. That motion is now on the table. That motion is debatable to the extent the council needs to debate to come to a decision as to whether to postpone this item.
All right. Any questions for the... Counselmember Volin?
Just a procedural one. So unlike the question, the overall question, the motion to postpone requires five votes to be approved.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Do we need to go to the public?
No, I don't want to.
Okay.
You certainly could if you'd like to, but...
All right. Any further discussion?
Question?
Yes, Counselmember.
Would Counselmember Rallo like to speak further about the kinds of information that, and the kinds of conversation that he anticipates in the next week that would merit a postponement?
Well, I'll just refer to what I described a few minutes ago, that I find that we do have surplus, and we do have, what I recall, a windfall of the Creed. I know we differ, I differ with Counselmember Volin on perhaps its specific locational use, but that might be accommodated, too. But the week is essentially to explore if we can increase, tighten our belt a bit, and utilize these funds to the capital investment for the police station that's needed, and therefore reduce the bond principal, and therefore the rate. And I understand that that calculation's already been made, and it's about $50,000 reduction per $1 million of reduced, of applied funds from the Creed. We reduce the tax by $50,000 per annum.
Additional questions? Counselmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I'd like to ask Counselmember Rallo why he didn't pursue the answers to those questions earlier. We've been talking about this for six weeks now.
Well, I have. I brought it up at every meeting that we've had. I've explored whether the Creed, what the balance of the Creed has been accumulated. We have two. It's 16 million total. Whether it could be applied to a police station, which we found out it can, whether it needed to be applied in a geographical restricted area, which it's required, but it is transferable to the general fund, which could, means it could be spent elsewhere. So those things were answered last time. I was hoping that the administration would apply more, maybe not all. Maybe not all of the Creed needs to go, not all 16 million. We could say only apply half of it, but we could reduce this tax by, say, $300,000 by applying 6 million more.
I guess I'm just wondering. I mean, I haven't heard from you in the last week, so have there been other conversations with other council members along these lines?
Yes, I've discussed it with the administration.
Thank you.
Counselmember Flaherty.
I'll be voting no on the amendment to postpone. I think the point's been made by the administration, and I think it's a good one, that we are trying to set up a long-term, fiscally sustainable plan for capital replacement, including facilities for public safety and for, you know, all city operations, of course. So using sort of time-limited, one-time capital influx does not address that issue, that long-term, you know, 50-year-plus time scale sustainability that we're looking to have. So I see the offer to use 3 million of the Creed funds to support that and reduce the tax as a pretty good-faith compromise that the administration was not, you know, that was not their preferred course of action. So just like the rate itself, I think it already represents a meaningful compromise on this front. So I would be unlikely to support future amendments to shift that. And for that reason, among others, I'll be voting no on the amendment. I'm sorry, no on the motion.
Thank you. Counselmember Volin.
Yeah, I'm going to join my colleague, Counselmember Flaherty, in voting no on the motion. And I would want to remind my colleague from District Four that he's pledging the tax dollars of constituents of District Six for the sake of reducing the taxes for everybody else. Taxes that have been collected and have been, were collected in good faith for investment in the downtown Creed district. So I'm not sure what he thinks that I'm supposed to tell the businesses and the residents who live in the areas immediately surrounding the courthouse that have 150-year-old infrastructure that could use upgrading, why the money that they expected would be invested in their district are suddenly all going to go to some other public good elsewhere. I wonder, you know, is District Four jealous of District Six for not having its own Creed? I don't know. But I don't appreciate his, I mean, I already was sensitive to the use of $3 million out of it for this. We're all making compromises here. I've made already several more compromises than I have wanted to, than I thought I was willing to make. But I find this last-minute effort to somehow lower the tax even more for, you know, reasons that Counselmember Piedmont Smith said very well, could have been addressed sooner in this process. Counselmember Smith was right. This has been a difficult process to figure out, well, what are the priorities that really matter? And so I'm really quite put off, in retrospect, hearing this whole discussion, that Counselmember Rallo would be so quick to volunteer these funds when they're simply kind of moving the tax burden around. Those dollars should be used for the district where they were collected. That was what the state set up in the first place. So I would urge my colleagues not to support this postponement. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselmember Smith.
Thank you. My thoughts on it is that Counselmember Rallo is conducting due diligence, and he's trying to rest some additional funds to reduce the tax from the administration. And that's part of what our job is, is to have this fiduciary responsibility. And I, you know, I applaud him for it, and I support that. And ultimately, we don't know what's going to happen there, but, you know, I support his efforts. So of course, I'm going to support the proposal, so.
Additional comments? Counselmember Rosenbarger.
Logistics for me for next week. I need to be out of town, so a special session would be really hard, I think, with just eight, since this isn't, this isn't a thing I can vote on virtually, I think. So if anything, if this is postponed, I think it should be postponed to a different regular session. I will just also echo my colleague's sentiment. I think the administration, and I would say seven of us, have been working really hard over the last few weeks to come up with, like, a good-faith compromise on this. And to be, to be absent from that, I think, has been difficult for me, to have some colleagues absent from our conversations and our compromises. So I don't, I'm not encouraged to postpone this. Thanks.
Counselmember Rallo.
Yes, Counselmember Rosenbarger, will you... Available on May 18th for the regular session.
I'll be here for the regular session.
And I'd like to modify my motion to continue discussion on Resolution 2209 to the regular session of May 18th.
I'll just note here, once a motion has been made and seconded, if the maker of the motion would like to modify that, they can do that with unanimous consent of the council. If there's an objection, it's a majority of the council that would have to approve of this modification.
All right. So do we need to take a roll call on approval to modify?
I would ask first if there's any objection to the modification, and if there is, then you'll need to proceed to a vote.
I agree.
So now the modification to the motion can only be made by a majority of the council approving of the modification.
And so next up, we do?
I believe so, unless there was, was there no second to the motion to modify?
I'll second.
Sure, I'll second the motion to modify via Counselmember Rallo's suggestion.
So now I believe a majority of the council would need to approve of this change to the motion.
Okay. So will the clerk please call the roll on the vote to modify?
No.
No.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Volin?
No.
And I didn't hear Counselmember Rosenbarger's vote. Was that a no? Was that a yes? Okay. All right. And so that passes 6-3. Is that my calculation? All right. So what we have now is a modification of your motion that we postpone this to May 18th. Is that correct? All right. Any further discussion on that?
May I just note, in response to Counselmember Volin's comment, millions of tax dollars are accumulated from the city, from city residents, and millions of dollars are spent downtown. I would say downtown is probably the focal point of most of our expenditures in terms of physical improvements and employment and parking garages and everything that it takes to facilitate a downtown. And so to say that this is somehow seizing money from District Six, I find ironic. So I'll leave it there.
All right. Any additional comment? Counselmember Volin.
Yes, I'm quite accustomed to other districts feeling that the dollars collected in District Six belong to the rest of them. I've heard this about parking for a long time. Well, because parking is collected there, well, the benefits should accrue to all the neighborhoods. But the whole reason it's there in the first place is because those peripheral districts exist, and that the primary way that they get there is by car, which takes up valuable public space that could be used for something else. I think that my colleague, I mean, at least one other colleague of mine, who is a district representative, seems to forget that they represent a district, and they seem to want to be at-large representatives. I, for one, am doing my best to do my job and to defend the interests of District Six. So I'm a little surprised that my colleague is surprised. I continue to assert that the money collected in the Creed should stay in the Creed, and I'm going to be fighting as much as possible to make sure that it does. And any idea that Counselmember Rallo has of that money flowing to the general fund perfectly underscores, I mean, why not? Let's just, let's just siphon out all the revenue that comes to District Six. Why set up districts at all? That's how it's going to be used, so that people who live in the periphery, who often, I mean, Counselmember Rallo's district is, I would argue, the wealthiest in the city. I'm a little surprised to hear this from him. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? All right. Just to clarify, the motion on the table is to postpone the final vote to May 18th. Did I characterize that correctly? To our regular session?
The mayor's motion, yes, postpone consideration of Resolution 2209 to May 18th.
And any final comment on the motion that's on the table? Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. I think we all know that there's a lot of moving parts in this whole process that we're talking about. And I am pretty much impressed from where we started a couple of weeks ago to where we are now, and who's given up some things and who, you know, these sorts of deals. What I would like, and I'll have a little bit more on this comment, but I would like, if it's proper, I'd like for the mayor to come up, and if he will, because I want to know what your thoughts are on having excess in PS Lit. I've sat on PS Lit, and there might be, but I see it a little differently. So I'd just like to know your thoughts on that. But with regard to the Creed district, and I understand what it was created for, and I'm not taking sides one way or another, but, and it said that's not what it's intended to use. And I don't disagree with that. But I don't think that we ever intended to start running a deficit and keeping the city lights on moving forward. Sometimes I compare some things. I don't know if people, I know this is a city, and it's not the Sims budget. I get that. But one of the things that the Sims budget did, and I think other folks do, is that, one of the things I learned is that you bill six months' worth of your expenses, and you set that over here, just in case some stuff happens. Okay. Now, I've got the six months here. But I've got two brothers in this town, and he runs into hardship. Now, do I say, you don't get none of this? Now, I'm not going to give him all of it, because I've got a family. But that's not intended, but I am willing to use some of that to help another situation get over a rough spot. So that's kind of the way I see that. We throw the word innovative around. And I appreciate what my colleagues have said. I do. But when we get in a position that we need to look after each other and use what we have to get by, then I don't think using Creed funds is unreasonable in this particular case. And that's okay if you don't agree with it. That's fine. I mean, I get that. But I'd like to hear from the mayor with regard to the public safety lit, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
I think, as you also heard from Controller Underwood, we actually do not project a balance in the non-dispatch PS Lit by the end of this year, regardless of what was reported that Mr. Underwood projected that to be basically zero. PS Lit's been incredibly important. You also heard from our fire chief and police chief about the importance of the 10-year capital plan and the operational support, that they allow everything else to go. So we view PS Lit as very important, but it does not have extra in it. And it's really important that we get additional support as outlined in this Lit.
Thank you. And I'll finish, Madam President. I just heard the term that we have to rest funds from the administration. And I know what some of my colleagues, that's the way it seems. That distresses me, to think that I have to rest, I have to grab and force money from my administration. Now, I don't particularly feel that way from the resting standpoint. I think there's some other things we can do. I think that's pretty evident, because both sides have moved since we started this conversation. So I think there's some movement there. And I guess why I asked the mayor that is I just don't, I've talked to my colleague, Councilmember Rallo, and I understand his position, and I can respect that. I just don't see what can change much but in the next two weeks with regard to this. I just, we're going to talk more, but I just don't fundamentally see what else is going to change that's going to really affect anything. So thank you. I'll comment more in two weeks, I guess.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I would just say, I do not anticipate that this motion will pass. I tend to want to support it for one reason and one reason only, and that's I've made some, in my communications with constituents who have reached out to me and expressed their concern about it, I said I would do my best to bring this proposal down to as far as we could bring it down and still manage to get consensus and get the council's approval on it. I will be on the PS Lit Committee this summer, and I'm looking forward to it. I haven't been on it for some time. I was on it early on when it was first established. But this is an opportunity for us to work with the county, take a look at what's going on with the PS Lit. I did communicate with the state budget director, just in my own mind, have an idea of what we can do with the PS Lit if we pass an ED Lit in the same year, and what we can't do. We can't raise it, we can't lower it, but we can modify it. And so again, I'm looking forward to the conversation with our colleagues from the county in Ellisville and Steinsville to kind of talk about maybe where there might be some adjustments to the PS Lit to maybe change some percentages that would maybe allocate a few more funds if we are in need of them from the Bloomington, Ellisville, Steinsville county level, once the dispatch is taken off the top. So that's a future discussion, and I'm looking forward to having. Again, I think we all want to be fiscally responsible up here. I certainly do. And so with that, if there are no further comments, we have a motion to consider a postponement to May 18th. And at this point, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Scamblehurry?
No.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Rosenberg?
No.
Volin?
No.
Sims?
No.
Is that it, everybody? Okay. Yeah, 360. And we are ready to come back to Resolution 2209 as amended. So we do, any questions from council, or?
If the council members have any questions, they would be certainly able to ask those now. The council's typical practice is to go to the public on any legislation after it's been amended. So if you'd like to offer a chance for folks to comment on the resolution as amended, you could do that now.
All right. One more opportunity for the public. Anyone here in chambers wish to step up and make a comment about the resolution as amended? Anyone from home wish to raise a hand on Zoom?
And again, for the folks on Zoom who might wish to comment, I see one hand raised at the moment. If there are other folks that would like to speak, please indicate that you want to comment by using the raise hand button. That should be in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. Or you can send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to comment that way. And I see just one hand raised at the moment.
All right. Let's go ahead and recognize that one hand.
And first up is Eric Spoonmore, who should be able to unmute.
Hello. And forgive me, guys. I am, what is the current status of the amendment? Is this to postpone to the next meeting?
No. This is the new amendment that reduces the amount.
Reduces the amount, okay.
The ordinance. This is the ordinance itself.
Got it. Okay. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. Really appreciate all the work you do and have been doing in your efforts to strike a deal on this. Eric Spoonmore, President, Department of Bloomington, Chamber of Commerce. I was hoping that you'd support Mr. Rallo's motion. I thought it was a very reasonable motion considering the magnitude of what's being deliberated. Just take some more time to examine all the options available, and there's good reasons to do that. As you know, the chamber has been actively participating in these meetings, providing commentary over the past several weeks. So I don't mean to belabor the point tonight. However, we feel the amended rate is still an excessive burden to ask of Monroe County taxpayers at this particular point in time. This amendment effectively has taken the request from a 64% increase, if I'm not wrong here, in income tax, to a 51% increase. 51% increase in income taxes during a period of record-high inflation still seems quite excessive. I'll ask again that the council scale this proposal back to fund only the needed public safety investments, as well as the transit link to the Park 48 educational and employment hubs located on the west side of Bloomington. Committing to these investments would only require $7 million rather than the $14 million through this amendment or the originally proposed $18 million. And so in addition to the exceedingly high inflation rates that we're currently experiencing, Monroe County taxpayers are also seeing extraordinarily high growth and assessed values, which will further increase the property tax burden of your constituents. In addition to all of that, much of the community is also preparing for a continuation of the MCCSC referendum, which we expect will amount to be about a 40% increase from the current referendum rate, again, affecting property taxes and that burden that residents will pay. My point here is that there's a lot coming at our workers and businesses and residents all at once. And this is real money we're talking about. So I'm hearing constantly right now from our chamber members, there's deep concern about the negative effects of inflation and the erosion of income that inflation is causing on their businesses and their workers. And I know you all care deeply about our workers, and especially our dedicated workers who are unionized. This 51% increase in income tax during this high inflationary environment will only compound the negative effects of income erosion to our workers. I ask again that you please give this additional time and consider further reducing this income tax rate so that it will be less excessive to our residents and our workers of Monroe County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore. Do we have additional comments?
I don't see any additional hands raised in Zoom at the moment.
All right. With no public comment, we come back to council for final comments. Councilmember Volin.
I appreciate your information, Mr. Spoonmore, who I know is very knowledgeable about local government, having served at the county council and now working for the chamber. I'm sensitive to his concerns. But I'd like to read a couple of lines from the proposal that he's suggesting we might need to reduce. There's $1.047 million for improved access to housing equity through funding assistance for the Housing Security Group. I don't know if that won't help workers, but I think it will help our local workers. There's $200,000 in workforce and economic development to help our workers. There's $1 million in an economic equity fund that's part of this tax would fund that would directly support low-income working residents and families, possibly matching savings in individual development accounts, focusing on direct impact, impact possibly through SCAP, MACAM, or other entities. Okay? These are all, I mean, the next two lines, just in the equity and quality of life for all, were public arts and arts development and local food access and nutrition security. We have a policy in the city of trying to have developers do 1% for the arts. And there was about 1% of this tax that would have gone to funding for maintenance of existing art spaces, execution of the recommendations of the city's arts visibility study, investment in the arts. That number has been cut to $46,500. We've already cut it by more than three quarters. But again, anyone who's arguing now that we should only fund this line and that line is cutting out these other things. So to say that these line items somehow wouldn't help workers, I think, is wrong. To say that the tax only does, only hurts people right now is incorrect. That certainly one of the objectives, I mean, the administration's been pretty, you know, clear and specific about it this time, this year. Like, here's where our priorities are. And, you know, a change at this point in the way that he suggested would mean cutting priorities like this. Because I don't see where else Councilman Rallo is going to find the cuts and also fund the other priorities that he and others have said are so important. This has been really hard. Councilmember Smith was right about the difficulty of this, this proposal. Everyone has had to contemplate it hard. They've, we've been, we've been making compromises, and none of us would ever think we would have made, but we have. I mean, this is sausage making at its very best. So before anyone thinks about changing, once again, I want to remind them of, I mean, this is not by any means, this is just one, one portion, one bucket of the four proposed by the administration. So, you know, be careful what you ask for, is what I would say. I support this proposal as amended. I would have supported it at .855, because I think it would have done some great things for workers and for everyone in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Scamblehurry.
Yes, thank you. And first things first, thank you especially to my colleagues. I would echo Councilmember Volin, Councilmember Smith. We have all made compromises that we didn't anticipate making, that we may not have wanted to make. But we understand the importance of that element of this process. I am grateful for the dialogue and the willingness to compromise that has gotten us to this point. My colleagues have all heard me say this, and it seems particularly apropos this evening. But sometimes there are no solutions. There are only trade-offs. And this is the classic example. All of us have given up something that we felt very strongly about in this process. And all of us have been willing to compromise and allow our colleagues to realize something that was very important to them. So those trade-offs are what have gotten us to this position. There is no perfect solution here. But I think that we have had a good process to get us to this point. So questions that I've been asking myself at a meta-level throughout this process that helped me determine what my vote, does this proposal include a clear, coherent set of funding priorities? I asked this about the last proposed tax increase in 2020. And here we do see, I think, a clear, coherent set of funding priorities. We talk about public safety, climate action, equity and quality of life, and essential city services. And we have a spreadsheet that actually lists some clear priorities under each of those. There's still flexibility. I'm satisfied with the level of flexibility that's built in, but I appreciate the coherence and the thought that went into that. Next question, is this a reasonable time to pass a tax increase? I have stopped asking, is this a good time to pass a tax increase? Because no one has been able to tell me when a good time is. So I've asked, is this a reasonable time at which to pass an increase? One corollary to my solutions and trade-off statement is that all of the big decisions we have to make as a council are likely to be made on imperfect information. Okay? We don't know everything about the direction the economy may take, or about the war in Ukraine, or about how COVID will unfold in the months to come. That's true. We don't. We are making this decision based on imperfect information, and most of our big decisions are going to be made that way. These are unusual times. We seem to be moving into a post-pandemic environment. We do have some very real economic challenges. And I want it understood that we had, I don't mean to speak for my colleagues, but I'm guessing that every single one of us has honestly heard those concerns. Next is a proposal built on substantial public engagement and some genuinely collaborative discussions between the administration and council. And I believe it has. And I especially want to thank the mayor for engaging in, I don't, I didn't even bother to count how many conversations and meetings that have happened over these kinds of compromises and these kinds of discussions, not just with council members here, but also with elected officials elsewhere in the county too. I'm appreciative of that. And I'm appreciative of the give and take and the willingness to think through this process. I'm also very appreciative of the comments we've had coming in from the public. I want to assure the public that I have heard the comments and heard the concerns about particular language that might be related to housing or the timing of the proposal as a whole. I think that dialogue has been good. Okay? Next question I ask myself, to the extent possible, have we tried to minimize the burden placed on those who are vulnerable and struggling? And again, I believe we have. Social Security benefits are not taxed in the state of Indiana. Beyond that, we have built in specific things, including the $1 million Equity Economic Equity Fund that you've heard about, subsidies for BT ridership, investments in transit. I believe we have elements of this proposal that are designed to reduce the burden placed on those who are struggling and those who are vulnerable. So with all of that, and we do know that we have obligations that we have to fulfill. We have an FOP contract that must be funded. We have essential city expenses that must be covered, elements of the Climate Action Plan. Plan that need to be implemented. We have work to do, and I believe the case has been made for additional revenue that will do it. I am grateful again to my colleagues for the discussion and the compromise and the goodwill that has been brought. With that, I'll be voting yes on the increase.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Rallo.
Yes. Thank you. Well, there are certainly many items within this proposed, proposal that I agree with, and, and I do appreciate my colleagues for their hard work on this. I know it hasn't been easy, and I respect everyone for their, they're willing to sacrifice. This tax could have been much higher. Perhaps many would have liked it higher. I think that I agree with Eric Spooner more that this comes at a terrible time, and I would just say that a good time or a better time would be a time when people, people's salaries were keeping pace with inflation and that we, they had discretionary spending that could absorb this kind of tax, but the opposite is true right now. So it is a bad time. So I know that this process requires at least eight of us to ensure that the tax passes, and there are many essential items within it. In terms of essential city services, I'm gratified that Mayor Hamilton has committed to keeping salaries of city employees commensurate with, with cost of living increases and so they're not losing ground. The police salary is, of course, it is embedded within this tax. I think it, it was embedded by design, and so I'm, places me in a, in a very difficult position because I, of course, completely support the increase in salaries that the police need in order to, for us to maintain the quality of the police force that we expect and that we've had in the past. So, with the essential city services and the police salary embedded within this, I find that it is just too important to, to jeopardize, and I've, I've made some attempts to reduce the amount. I've tried to extend the time. I think the time, timing would have been better had we done this post-budget, and I proposed that to the administration. That is, show us the need, show us what kind of belt tightening we could do before one proposes a tax, and that hasn't been done. So if we pass this tax, then they will proceed with the expected revenue, and we won't know. So that exercise has not occurred. I do find I am troubled by having an account of what I see as a windfall of 16 million and only applying three to a capital expenditure that we could reduce this tax, yes incrementally, but we could reduce it and show good faith to the public who are going to be tightening their belts that we're doing it to. So, given that, I, I will support it because it, the FOP contract must be honored, and I'll finish. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
First, I'd really like to thank the mayor and administration, including Deputy Mayor Griffin and Jeff Underwood. We've had some, some long and good conversations, I think. I've learned a lot more about the process, so thank you. I want to thank my colleagues. We've individually, and of course, following the law, we've all had individual discussions to see where we all sit on these things, and I am impressed with, with the compromises that some of my colleagues have made over the time. I've made some as well, but I thank you all for that. On all these buckets that we're talking about, initially, I was more supportive of public safety and essential city services buckets. I also understand that there are some very needed and necessary things in the climate change mitigate, preparedness and mitigation bucket, as well as the equity and quality of life bucket. I also know you can't have it all, so you need to pick what's, what's the priorities. And to me, public safety is probably the highest priority right now moving forward. Now, I, I'm gonna take a little parental pause with that, with the information I heard earlier, and I will say that I think it would behoove me to scrutinize a little bit more some of the policies that we operate under to get some of these results, but I think some of you heard like I heard in the report earlier this evening, that black residents are overrepresented in police citations by 245%. Did I mishear that? I think that's what I heard. 13.9% of the citations written to black residents, 13.9% are written to black residents. Understand that our population is less than 4%. Where's the equity in that? Now, that's going to be some future conversations. I sent on the board of public safety, and I am not casting aspersions or blaming anything at this point. It definitely needs work, and we will work on that, so you can expect to talk to me and others probably as we move on. I agree with Mr. Spooner in the fact that there is no good time for tax. I mean, even if we're all doing well and we offer a tax, and people are gonna say, why? We're doing well. We don't need a tax. So there is no good time, but there is a necessary time, I think. One of the difficulties I had with this from the beginning is the impact on those that are less fortunate in this community. Now, that was, and, and some of the things that we're proposing will help in that regard substantially. We'll still have some issues, but that'll help substantially. But the things that I consider, for an example, I don't know if I was the only one today that got your property tax assessments in the mail from our county assessor. Think taxes are going down on your property? See, that's something that, we're talking about lit. Now we're talking about property assessments. Okay? I anticipate there's going to be a MCCSC referendum in the fall, another increase. Inflation, as my colleague, Councilmember Rallo, has stated consistently, inflation is nuts, and in fact, I think the Fed is going to raise it another half percent coming up, is what I heard reported. Did it today? Thank you. We're also on an every-two-year increase, and I don't remember if it's water or wastewater at this point, or stormwater, I don't remember, but we're on a every-two-year cycle, which I still think is good because we don't want to wait, do something 10 years, wait 10 years later and just pound people. So I think, but, but understand, that's coming, and I just mentioned five things that's going to add up to people that's, that's really wrapped up in taxes and what we have to do. So that's what concerns me when I look at how it's going to affect our community. Now, the flip side of that, public safety is strong or is, is very urgent in this community. I think everyone that I've talked to will tell you, public safety is a priority, and particularly our police force. A priority. One of the things with city essential services is to be safe. I mean, I don't know how else to cut it. I also think when you drop from .855 down to .69, that's pretty darn substantial to me, and it represents compromise. It represents that we focus on some of the things we had more in common than we have not in common. It speaks to middle ground, and I still think we're moving in the right direction. We definitely need new revenue stream. I'm happy that we've got it down. That's been part of the conversation these last several weeks, is how do we get it to a reasonable level for such a thing? Would I like it to go a little lower? Yes. Could we do what we really want to do long-term, much lower? Eh, it'll be difficult. So I, I think there's been some thought. And the last thing I'll say, and we'll have these conversations coming up in budget time, but I, I don't want, and this isn't directed at anyone, I don't like polit speak. I mean, let's just talk. If you got a dollar, tell me you got a dollar. Don't tell me all this other stuff. I don't want to hear that, you know? Let's just cut that stuff, and let's sit down and talk about it and be honest with each other, and then we can say, yes, we can do it, or no, we can't. So that, that's all I have to say. So thank everyone for your time and listening and your due diligence these last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete Munt Smith.
Yes, I do support this resolution. I feel that it will be a great benefit not only to the city of Bloomington as we enact programs for the benefit of our community, but also to the county government as they are facing significant investment needs in criminal justice. And so I think the, the projected, all right, I've, I've lost track of how many millions, but it was a significant chunk of money that they would also receive every year. And as a county resident, I'm pleased to see that as well, because I think that the county needs, needs the funds to make some important public criminal justice investments. I'd like to mention just, Councilmember Sims, I agreed with what, a lot of what he said. I did want to mention that not everybody who has talked to me about the lit increase or the lit proposal has supported the funding for the police. There is, there are members of our community who, first of all, don't believe investment in police equals public safety, and there are some who would prefer the money that is, been proposed for the police salaries actually go elsewhere. So I just wanted to make that known. I personally do think we need to pay our police better, and I'm in favor of that salary increase, but I think at the same time, and this is something that Councilmember Sims also alluded to, we need to look at some of our policing practices, and we need to, as a community, recognize that police are not always the answer to public safety. Finally, I'd like to remind everybody that what we're voting on tonight is a recommendation to the Monroe County Tax Council for an increase in the local income tax for economic development. It is not the final step, but, you know, if enough city council members do vote in favor, then I don't believe there is something that the other participants in the Monroe County Income Tax Council can do to prevent this increase from occurring. But it is just a vote on an increase. The, the list of projects that we've been discussing for many weeks now is not actually a commitment in stone that that is how the funds will be spent each year, and therefore, as long as I am on council, I'm going to very carefully look at what the administration has committed to through the attachment to Amendment One, of the, the program list, the investment list of what the funds will be used for, and I will look for that to be reflected in the budget proposals for at least 2023 and 2024, and then if I remain on council and the mayor remains in office beyond that as well. So I just wanted to remind everybody that this is not approving funds for specific programs, it is approving a, a rate increase with the understanding that, at least from the city, these programs are what is going to be enacted through the budget process. So thank you very much, everybody, for your collaboration, and I hope that this passes this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else for a final comment? Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I'll be supporting the resolution. First and foremost, I wanted to recognize an improved process and effort from the administration on, on this proposal that I think is, is well-articulated and well-justified, as well as my colleagues who, you know, have, have worked together to find, I think, a consensus or close to it among city council members, which is not always easy. We have actually a diverse range of views on, on many topics, despite the fact that we're all, all Democrats and, and, you know, share the goals of, of quality of life and the public good and equity and justice for all of our residents. A few thoughts with regards to the county. You know, I, I share the, the view that Council President Sandberg has indicated, you know, that it'd be nice if we were working directly with them on the development of a proposal. I don't think there's any real question that our county-elected officials feel the need for new revenue. I've, I've now spoken with six of the seven county councillors who are the fiscal body for the county and the members of the Local Income Tax Council, and, and all of them agree they need more revenue, but they are, are not in a position with respect to their planning, especially vis-à-vis the, the Justice Center and upcoming changes there and needs and, and programmatic needs that are related to that. You know, they, they don't, their planning is not at a stage where they would be able to, you know, meaningfully articulate a rate, I don't think. At least that's the, the feedback that I got from the members that I spoke to. So I, I question a little bit how useful, honestly, that process would have been of, of directly engaging the county in kind of a collaborative conversation about what the appropriate rate is, because I don't think, I just don't think they're well-suited to know right now. And that's reflective of the fact that the city and county have different interests. Even if we knew exactly what the county's preferred rate was, you know, we, we have different interests, and we're voting to represent the city and represent the city's interests. It's a flawed process, I agree. It's handed to us by the Republican, you know, supermajority of the State House, just like property tax caps, just like the regressive nature of how lit functions in Indiana. None of those things are ideal. It's the flawed system we work within, and, you know, we're constrained in that way. I think to use that argument to say we shouldn't have taxes, or we shouldn't ever pass a lit because we've got this flawed process from the state is, is a non-starter. So too is the, the view that taxes basically only harm people. We've kind of heard that sentiment over and over that, you know, this is going to negatively impact low and moderate income tax. Sorry, folks. The implicit in that is that taxes can't do good, and that's, you know, a fundamentally conservative viewpoint that I don't think is reflected in the politics of this county. Yes, we're hearing that from some people, from some organizations even, that we're just going to harm people, but I didn't, I firmly, you know, believe that that is not the majority viewpoint of the residents of Monroe County who, you know, are a pretty liberal and progressive bunch on many things, and I would think would align with the view that actually taxes invest in the public good, taxes allow us to do more for the folks that are struggling, and I think there's many examples of that in this proposal. Similarly, I've talked about status quo bias before. If taxes only harm people, we should eliminate the lit, cut parks, cut all our programs. We don't need government, you know, to help out. You know, taken to its logical end, that's kind of where that goes. There's no reason the current tax rate is the right one. I think, again, all of the, the things that we've talked about in this proposal are well-justified. There, there are transformative investments in things like transit that are really going to help folks reduce automobile dependence, but especially help folks who are already dependent on transit and struggle to get to work on Sunday or struggle to get home in a reasonable time because it takes an hour or an hour and a half. I think we should remember that our Democratic colleagues in Indianapolis worked together to pass a 0.25 lit rate increase, more than what we're doing, directly invested in transit, more than we're putting into transit, I should say. Similar, I think the investments in implementing our Climate Action Plan are very well justified, even though we didn't hear support from that from some of the folks who were advocating smaller pieces of this. You know, case in point, we had a, a pretty devastating flood last June that, that killed someone and led to, you know, tens of millions of dollars of damage, including to our fire headquarters, which is part of the reason we have a tax increase here. Part of what we're doing is, is trying to adequately prepare for and plan for those impacts, plus do our part in the collective movement to reduce and mitigate that change. It's, it's not easy because this is a, a snowballing and long, long-lasting problem. It's, the easy thing to do is to ignore climate change and do nothing at all about it. There's plenty of folks doing that. But again, our values for decades now have committed us strongly to aggressive and bold action in line with the science on climate change, and that's what we're doing. You know, again, following city plans. I think something that struck me, you know, Councilmember Sims mentioned about other small increases that we see over time with the, the utilities, which is, which is true. There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of things that add up, but I've, I've had an in-depth conversation with Vic Kelson about the Payment Protection, you know, Plan and Program within City of Bloomington Utilities. It is well-funded by taxes, or I suppose by rates, actually, but it is well-funded, and anyone who is struggling on the basis of income to pay their bills can get assistance, and, and, you know, that's, that's been effective at, at addressing where it actually is a pinch point for folks. And so I think we, it's just an example of the kind of things we are investing in, like the Economic Equity Fund here, to address the folks who this might otherwise negatively impact. I think that's it for me. I'll just close with saying again that, that I appreciate- I'll just close with saying again that, that I appreciate the collaborative and, and the collaborative nature of this and the compromise that's been reached by a number of my colleagues. And again, I'll be voting in support.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
I really appreciate all the comments by council members today. And I will just say, I echo almost everything that they've said. I don't want to speak for a long time here. I've also, I think, just given my comments throughout this process. Mostly, I would just say I'm incredibly glad that this is passing, and I'm excited that, I mean, looking back on the last two and a half years, potentially, this is the first time that this body with the administration has really, really like dug in deep and like compromised. And that's exciting, I think, moving forward to, you know, maybe do that again in the next, what do we have left here? 20, 20 months in the session, maybe? So that makes me feel good, and, you know, that we're really all keeping the city in mind and our residents in, and trying to do good work, even if our values differ a little bit or a lot. One note on transit. I am, I'm just really excited, you know, I've actually heard a lot of people who have moved here say they didn't have a car where they used to live, and they were surprised to move to Bloomington and need to buy a car, that they thought it would be just like where they used to live. So I am excited that we can upgrade our transit services a bit, and hopefully help people who don't have cars, either if that's by choice, or because they can't afford them, get around as easily as people with cars. So that is something that's, I guess, very near and dear to my heart, and excited that that's, that's going to change a bit. So thanks, everyone, for all this hard work. It's never easy, but it's worth it.
Thank you. Anyone else? And seeing no final comments, we are ready to call the question on Resolution 22-09. Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Rosenbarger.
Yes.
Volin.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
And Scambaluri.
Yes.
Passes unanimously 900. And now we are ready for additional public comment. We've had a lot on tonight's agenda, so I don't know what there might be left to talk about that is not on tonight's agenda. But let us go see if anybody has a hand up in Zoom, or anybody wants to make a comment here in chambers on a matter not on tonight's agenda.
And for the folks on Zoom who might want to comment, please use the raise hand feature to do so. You can find the raise hand button under your reactions tab or your more tab. And if you're not able to locate it, please send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to comment.
No hands popping up?
Not that I see, no.
Let's go ahead and move to our council schedule. What do we have on the agenda coming up?
Just a reminder that the council has a scheduled work session this Friday at noon in the McCloskey Conference Room, where you can hear a preview for items coming forward during the next legislative cycle starting on May 18th. Those items will at least include a right of way vacation request related to the Johnson Creamery property, as well as a resolution approving of the police union contract, given tonight's outcome. There will be a resolution coming to the council to approve of that negotiated contract with the, the FOP. So with those two items on tap for this Friday, can I have a show of hands of the members that might want to attend?
All right. Who's available? Who's coming? Thank you.
All right. I don't believe I have any additional scheduling items. I will have a quick reminder for the clerk's office that the resolution that you all adopted tonight requires signatures from all nine of you. So please stick around while the clerk prepares that for your signature.
Okay. Thank you very much. Nobody leave at this time. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.[1730.82]